Okay, at this time, we'll ask our clerk to call the row for a quorum, please.
Commissioner Blakemore.
Present.
Commissioner Askew.
Here.
Chairman Whitfield.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Stoltz.
Present.
All right, thank you, everyone's in attendance tonight. We do have the agenda that was prepared and sent out a week ago today on our website through our social media. Did not get everything accomplished we'd hoped to, so it would be my recommendation to the board that under unfinished business, the resolution R-20-22 to revise the public safety fee assessment in the county fire and rescue district, that we remove that from this agenda at this time to give us more time to work on that and come up with a viable solution. So, other than that, that's the only modifications that I would have for the agenda tonight. Is there any others? Okay, so at this time, do we have a motion to approve the agenda and also by removing the unfinished business?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore to do so. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda's approved with the modification. Okay, we do have in the packet the minutes from our regular scheduled meeting back on April the 14th, so those are in the packet for everyone to review or anyone at home tonight watching on Facebook can pull those up off of the website. So at this time, we'll entertain a motion by the board to approve these minutes or if there's any corrections that need to be made.
Motion to approve the minutes.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Hart to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second, but Commissioner Askew, any further discussion of the board on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented. Okay, we have informational, some discussion on a special event insurance for events at any county-owned community center, so we've asked our attorney David Gottlieb to come up and give us a brief overview about this information item.
Good evening, gentlemen. As you're aware, the county has several community centers and frequently rents those out for various types of events. I bring to your attention tonight something that a lot of people aren't aware of and something, this is just informational purposes for you to consider if you want to do it or not do it. But when someone rents our facilities, we have to always be aware that an unexpected entry may occur on our premises. And if it does occur on our premises, that there is liability potentially for that. And so there is a mechanism that is available called special event insurance that can be acquired by anyone who rents our facility. And most insurance agents sell this type, and of course, it depends upon the nature of the event, the duration of the event, but it can be purchased for one day or over a weekend, and it would just provide coverage for the county if a claim was ever made against the county saying, for example, someone slipped and fell and claimed that the premises, there was some defect in the premises, a missing piece of tile or something, and that that's what caused the entry. Now, this would be beneficial not only to the county, but would also be beneficial to the person who is sponsoring the event. And so I just bring that to your attention. I'd be happy to answer any questions. My recommendation would be, that is not something that is covered under our existing insurance policy. And, you know, if you were to ask that that become a condition of running, then I would suggest that that cost be borne by the sponsor of the event. So do y'all have any questions that I can answer? This is just informational at this point.
So you're saying we don't have any insurance in place for that now?
Well, we do have some premise liability, but, you know, I'm not sure if it is a special event for which we are, whether we're actually being compensated or not from a rental perspective, you know, and I just don't want us to be out there, and candidly, I don't want the person who is sponsoring the event to be out there either for their personal protection without insurance coverage.
Do we, currently, when renting a facility, do we have a, some type of a whole harmless or some type of something that we make them sign to relieve us of liability? Because I'm just curious because, like our, let's just say the civic centers or that campus, for instance, which is a daily use, you know, during the week, you know, somebody can slip or fall there just as well, you know, whether they're out walking the track, you know, or, so I'm just curious, I think a great point, and I want to make sure that we do cover the citizens in the county, for sure. I want to be careful about pricing it out of the means of people that would use it for a birthday party or things like that, you know, so I'm kind of curious to, it, do we, is there a way that we might can look at covering that liability standpoint from having a release of some sort, this legal binding document that would be signed upon, that would, that would maybe take the place of, or I know it's not going to completely cover, but I'm just curious how that might work.
Sure, great point. With regard to the civic center, we do have a standard lease, and it does include an indemnification and release provision, and for some folks who are citizens who may not be familiar with that terminology, a release just says that the sponsor releases, in this case, Walker County, from any claims that may be made in regard to, for example, an event, a birthday party, let's just say that. And the term indemnification means that goes a step further, and it says, not only I, the sponsor, release Walker County from any liability, but I also agree to indemnify, which means to make the county whole for any claims that are made against the county for injuries or damages arising out of my use of your premises. The problem is that an indemnification agreement is only as strong as the financial resources of the person who signs the document. So I'm not trying to be smart about it, but let's say that somebody, I'm going to use the birthday party just as an example, and there's 20 young children, and children tend to be rather rambunctious and happy, and they might collide into each other or run into something, and if they were to have, for example, hit their head, God forbid, I mean, even if there isn't substantial injury, which certainly, we hope that would never be the case, but just taking a ride in an ambulance and going to the emergency room these days and having some MRIs diagnostic type of test done can run into several thousands of dollars. And if the person who is running it says, hey man, I don't have the money to do that, the person who's insured, if they think that it's as a result of the person who sponsored the event or the county, they're, they're going to look to the next party who can afford to reimburse them for their expenses. So, yes, the short answer to your question is, with regard to the civic center, we do have that in our lease agreement. With regard to the community centers, I have actually not seen a lease agreement. Each of those, I think that we need to have a standard agreement with that provision. I know that in the past, the community centers seem to have been sort of run by a person or two who may sort of be in charge. I mean, they're, obviously, they're county-owned facilities, but from a practical standpoint, there's usually a couple people at every one of them that are sort of the person in charge. So I plan on, you know, preparing a lease agreement and including in the lease agreement those provisions. However, you know, it's something, something for your thought.
Sure, great information, great information.
Add a little bit to this. One of the things that caused this question to surface is with one of our community centers, there had been an inquiry where a local person who had a, I guess, a nonprofit status, I'm understanding, wanted to lease one of the community centers for a summer day camp for children to come multiple days during the week for a summer camp, and they were asking, what's the requirements, what's, you know, they were reaching out, asking these type of questions, you know, what do I need to provide to do this? And so historically, in Walker County, our community centers have all operated very well by people locally in the community overseeing those and taking pride and ownership in their community, and each one of them kind of operate a little differently based off of the people within the community, and they take those rental revenues and they put it back into that community center, and they're buying their paper products and their soap and things like that for the bathrooms, and the county maintains the facilities, the grounds, the big picture, electricity, all the utilities and all that go along with that, and so then they can use the funding for special, special things over and above. And so we don't have a standardized platform for each one of our community centers to, to work from that's been put together by the county attorney. And then also, too, you could have events where you have large gatherings where it's a covered dish or a wild game or something, and maybe you have a situation where you may end up with a food poisoning situation, where you may end up with 15 or 20 people that go to the hospital and they find out they just got food poisoned, they're going to be okay, but you've got that type of situation. And so if we're looking at it, you know, nobody wants any of those bad things to happen, but if we have some type of minimum required type policy for, if nothing else, larger type of events or where there's a lot of gathering or food being brought in that's not prepackaged, then it could keep from having a hardship on that sponsor or that organizer or the facilitator of the event, and they'll come up and have 10 or 15 people that's got a doctor's visit for potential food poisoning. So it's just really to cover everybody, and so we just wanted to bring it up in just general discussion and see, because it would be kind of taking a different approach where the community centers up to this point have all kind of, kind of had their own guidelines and things, and this would be saying, hey, here's something, we want a uniform across the county for consistency from a liability standpoint.
Say that that could be something we need to look at, and just real quick, when you mentioned that someone like that approached or looking at maybe wanting to lease or rent for an extended period of time, like for a daycare or stuff like that.
Like a day, a gate day camp.
Day camp, okay, like a week or something.
Yeah, you know.
Because my thought was, is we just have to be very careful about doing, tying up one of our facilities for any length of time that would, you know, interfere with other citizens being able to use the facility as well, you know.
And it would still be a discretion of the leadership of the local center if they wanted to do that, but if they did decide, hey, yeah, you know, nobody's using it Monday through Friday from 8:00 in the morning until 2:00, and the kids want to come in and have a day camp and finger paint and that type of stuff and play basketball, and someone's going to charge also a fee a lot of times for that, then there needs to be a uniform system, but this would be taking a step in a direction I don't think the county's been in before by trying to have a uniform requirement. And again, it's nothing negative on anybody's part. This question come forward as a citizen inquiring, just wanting to do the right thing and make sure they met the requirements, and so it generated the conversation.
Good, very good information. Be something to think about, for sure.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. All right, at this time is what we have on our agenda for public comments, where we ask any of our citizens that want to come up to the podium, and we'll give you up to five minutes to come up and address the board. We do ask you just to use your time wisely because there's only five minutes allotted each person, and we request that you keep your comments or questions related to county government because we can't fix things in Washington or at the state level, so try to talk to us about things maybe we can, can help you with or have an impact on. So would anybody like to come up tonight and speak before the board?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, if you would just come up to the podium there and just state your name for the record, if you would.
Yes, sir. My name is James Burton. I'm a local farmer. I raise beef cattle and hay for a living. I've got a farm I've been having, taken care of probably 20 years. I've been up cleaning it up where I can grow horse quality hay. It's 150 acres of this land. The past few years, I've had my neighbor's cattle come into my property and eat my hay. It's in the winter time, it's in the springtime, it's in the summertime, it's every time. Deputy sheriffs tell me I have to make records and blah, 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 tell me I need, I've started doing this. The 12th and the 22nd, I contact the owner, tell him the cows are on my property, I need them off of it, and quit driving through my hayfield, stay out of my hayfields. When he comes to get his cattle, he drives through my hayfields. It doesn't matter if it's raining, if it's frozen, it doesn't matter when he wants to ride across the hayfield to run his cows back. I'm tired of it, finished. Call sherlock department, next day, cows are out again. They tell me it's a civil case, I need to call animal control, call animal control. Kind of ignored me for a little while. They finally come out on the 31st. We had the owner of the cattle, the, one of the, two of the animal control guys, and I told them what I was going to do. These cows come back on my property, I'm going to load them up, I'm going to take them to the sale, I'm going to put them in the owner's name, and I'm going to charge them haul bill, whatever it costs to catch these cattle, because I'm tired of it. The animal control tells me this is a civil suit, they can't get involved. If the cows are out on the highway, they can get involved. Their cows are always out on the highway, during my field and highway, they're everywhere. I think I come and talked to Mr. Gottlieb a little bit after that, I talked to them. Same morning I got done talking to you, there were five cows already in my hayfield again. Call animal control. They tell me, I gotta wait till the supervisor before I can do anything. Next day, cows are out again, next day's out again. I hired a gentleman to come in and tranquilize these cattle, loaded them on a trailer and took them back to my facility where they wouldn't get right over this property I got. They have weddings, they have parties, they have rugby, they have a lot of things going on. They don't want these cows on this property either. That's the reason I'm leasing this property where I can have good quality hay. Okay, so, and so the, that was on a Sunday, we loaded cows up. Monday morning at 8:00, I called animal control. They sent a supervisor or two, or the animal control officer come out, took pictures, said they was going to notify and write him a ticket, and they would get back with me. Never heard anything until that Friday. That Friday, I was called detective from the sheriff's department, asked me if I had any cattle, and I said, yes, sir, I do. He said, I said, how did you get involved? And he said, well, they were turning and stolen. I said, well, animal control noted where they were at Monday morning. The land, the owner of the cattle's noted where they were going to be, because I told them I was going to retrieve them, get them out of my pasture. So they tell me I would have to go to court, and when he gets his citation, I would have my day in court, okay? Talked to the supervisor, I talked to the detective, and I talked to the animal control guy. They all come out on a Tuesday, and they all put it on, I put it on a video, and they all said I'd have my day in court. It may take a while because of COVID's going on, okay? I waited till a year and two months, find out, go to magistrate office. The arraignment was on 7th and the 5th. I never was summoned. Disposition was on the 9th and the 13th to the 21st, paid a $300 fine, spent $900 on having his cattle loaded up and moved to my place, and I give him his cattle back. It cost me $900, he walked away with $300 fine. And guess what? We started all over again, just like past three weeks, cattle being in my field again. I turn in another official report on Tuesday, and they supposed to be fine him, they supposed to get to go back to court whenever. I hope I get to go to court. I didn't get to go last time, so it's been settled. I lost my $900, but I still got cows in my hayfield. I want animal control to do something. I'm tired of it.
I'll be happy to address Mr. Burton. We've got two instances. One is your current situation, and one is the previous situation. And so I'd like to focus first on the current situation, and then I'll be happy to address the previous situation, okay? With regard to the current situation, Officer Stiles is here today. I have had a communication with him this week, and I believe that he is investigating. Have any citations been issued yet?
Yes, sir, I have issued a citation to the owner of the cattle. That's what Mr. Burton and the owner of the cattle.
Okay. So, just to give you a timeline, if it happens before the 15th of the month, which it has, the defendant will be cited by the court to appear the first Monday of June, okay? That's called arraignment. At arraignment, he enters a guilty or not guilty plea. Usually, in cases, when somebody enters a guilty plea and it's their first offense, the court has, in the past, permitted them to pay the fine. However, if there is a repeat offense, and this is arguably a repeat offense, I know more than what you told me today about what happened this past week, then we will, and I'll go ahead and inform you, it'll be the first Tuesday in May, and it'll be right here.
In June.
June.
Will I be summoned, is my question.
No, you won't be summoned for arraignment. You'll be summoned if you, usually you aren't summoned, period, but I'm giving you the dates now so you know when they are. So the trial will be the first Monday in July, the arraignment will be the first Monday in June. I would encourage you to attend both of those because I never, I am not the judge, and I don't have the authority of what to do and not to do. However, if I know that a person who is bringing a complaint, I will, you know, encourage you to attend, and the judge will probably let you speak at the arraignment and then make a decision whether or not to accept a guilty plea. Now, any action that you take with regard to capturing someone else's animals, tranquilizing them, loading them up and selling them, we, the county takes no position at all. That is a matter that you're involved in, and that would be between you and the owner of the cattle, okay? If, you always have the right to bring a civil action, and a civil action is different than a citation that's been issued by the county. A county citation is a criminal matter, but irregardless of what criminal citation is, you always have the right to pursue a separate civil action in any of our court systems, magistrate, state, or superior court, and pursue restitution. You can certainly come to the first Monday in, in June and, you know, plead, explain to the court your position, and the judge is within her discretion whether or not to order restitution. Typically, restitution is more in a civil case where you bring the action, and the judge in a civil case makes the decision about whether to order payment or not. So I hope that that has been somewhat helpful. I will be more than happy to meet with you either after the meeting this evening, or you can stop by my office, or you can call me in the morning, and I can give you more details. But I did want to sort of give you a basis and also to sort of explain to the public as well, it's just a good informational time to sort of say, this is how animal control issues work. In, in our ordinance, we do have a animal running at large, which means an animal that is not being confined on their property and or someone else's property. Usually, we're talking about domesticated animals such as dogs, that's 90% of it, but livestock certainly is an animal, and if it runs loose, our biggest concern is when animals get out on the road because we don't want the motoring public to be injured by anybody's cow out there that somebody's, be as serious as death if you hit one.
Excuse me. The problem I have, that I had three officials telling me I had my court date, and they would let me know, and I never got it. That's my problem.
Okay. Well, if you would like to talk to me, I will work forward with you on the situation.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Have a good one.
Anyone else like to come speak tonight? Yes, sir, come on up, please.
I'm Alfred Hollen, Chico Mondo. I was sure a couple months ago about a water problem on, on Myers Road on the east end. Mr. Barris, he knows about it, but what they're doing, it comes in like a 48 tile, and when it gets to the end, that's where it floods. Got two small, like maybe 18-inch tiles there, and, and it, Mr. Barris told me here a while back about putting another tile, but that won't help it, because what the small tiles, all that brush, it comes a couple miles down, you know, down through there, and the brush gets in them small tiles and stops them up. And since I've been here, we've had a couple of floods, and it's just, it's just real bad, you know, but the reason I come here today is because if we don't get it this summer, this winter, there's going to be something more important than mine. So you know what I'm saying, and that's the last, that's what Mr. Barris said, it has more important things up on Nick Jack up there, but unless it's a four-foot, 48-inch tile in there, it won't ever work because the small ones, the brush comes a couple miles down through there, and they'll get in that smaller and stop them up. Now, you could have three or four tile there, but they'd still be stopped up. You'd need one large cover, you know, 48 inches, and this has been going on for a long time, but I'm going to keep coming until I get it fixed, hopefully, anyway.
Carl, are you familiar with this situation?
I am. That's in the, in the corner of the interstate section there of Vito and Myers.
It's at the corner of Vito and Myers.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's right there, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's right there.
We can't really go any bigger because there's not enough coverage there. We'd have to go, I don't know how many feet to the left and right to dig all those ditches out to get a 48. 48 would never work. I think there's two 18s or two 24s.
Yes, two 18s, sir.
That's, and there's probably maybe eight inches coverage over those two pipe, and that's pretty flat, low area road, it's flooded forever. It, it's in a hole. I don't know how else to get it out, if we put anything bigger there, then we would have to ramp up the road, which is going to create a pond.
Or either, and I just, I want to ask you this too, Carl. Of course, it, it would be a totally different direction as far as expense and work, but to broaden it out, we'd have to do something more like a box cover and go wider and to get, in other words, you're not going to get a 48-inch height or even a squash pipe, you're not going to be able to get enough coverage, but to go wider and get more volume through without the obstruction of individual, you see what I'm saying? I'm just asking you, you know.
Possibly do that, the ditches are pretty narrow anyway, so.
Okay. Be, be something we could look at, a couple of different ways then.
Yeah, we'll look at and get a couple ideas, but I can't really go any bigger because there's just not.
That's what I was, that's the thing, is you, there's just not, you know, the road elevation to the bottom of the ditch elevation, there's not four foot there hardly, it's probably three foot.
That's the only way you could fix that is, I know you The only way you could fix that is, I know you don't do that, but take the road, go through there, and then dig down, then dig down.
We'd have to open it up and wipe and do, and do a wider.
You could dig down then.
Concrete box of some type.
I mean, no reason why you couldn't dig down deeper, and I know that's better.
If we dig down deeper, just put a forty-eight in, then you're gonna have a hole under the road, so when the water comes down, it's still only gonna, it's only gonna flow as deep as the ditch is around it.
You guys are pretty smart, I'm afraid you can figure it out some kind of way.
We'll be glad, we'll keep on looking at it.
Thanks a lot, Mr. Shannon.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
You too, Mark.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else tonight? Yes, ma'am, come up, please.
My name is Karen Bradley. I just wanted to update from what I brought in last month about the Veterans, the Lady Veterans Day, and Christie has made the official date, which is June twentieth. It's gonna be at six o'clock, and you can contact Christie Fowler at seven oh six nine nine six four one one one, forty-one eleven.
Nine nine six forty-one eleven?
And it'll be at six o'clock. It'll be on a Monday.
Twentieth.
Yes.
Thank you.
What is the venue location?
I think it's gonna be at post three thirty-nine there on Chattanooga Street, and it's for all ladies that's been in service.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay, we'll go to the next item on our agenda. Under new business, our annual property assessment update from Terry Gilreath, our chief assessor.
Chief appraiser.
Chief appraiser, sorry. Chief appraiser, Terry Gil.
We do have a couple of assessors here with us this evening. Buddy Chapman, our chairman, and Karen Deck, our newest member. Then I've got Mr. Keith Foltz here to, for moral support, but it's that time of year again, and we will be sending the notice of assessments out on the seventeenth of this month. So that's next Q. They'll be in the mail then. And we have, of course, the appeal period is forty-five days, and July first will be the final day for appeal. Not been fun. I can tell you that. We've had a lot of, of sales, a lot of deed transactions, had pretty close to four thousand deed transactions this, this year. And so far, we're on track for this next year to be about the same. It's not stopping, it's not easing up. The, the values, of course, they, they keep going up. The sales are ridiculous, I can, I can give you, you know, there's places where, you know, a couple of years ago, we had a house that sold for two hundred thousand dollars. Last year, it sold for three hundred thousand, and this year, it sold for four hundred thousand. So that, that sort of thing is common, and so we're having to constantly chase those numbers to keep those values up where they're supposed to be according to state law. So there's gonna be a difference, definitely a difference in the values this year. The commission board last year, of course, did the right thing and lowered their mileage rate to accommodate that, and I commend them for doing that, that was a good move. But the, of course, you've got the Board of Education that, you know, they need to do the same thing, and kind of relieve that a little bit, so. But we had no choice, because our ratio studies were telling us to do that. And ratio studies, they're pretty complicated, but basically, it's just, you know, the sale against the value that we have. The higher the sale, the lower the, the ratio study will be, because attached set up best off that forty percent. But one thing that we have been doing, we've got some analysis group that's helping us through this, we, we set our, our new values earlier in the year, we got the ratio up to forty, where it should be at. But then we've done another ratio study at the end of the year, and that forty has now dropped down to thirty-eight. So the, the values are really just constantly going up, and we don't see when it's gonna end, you know? So all we can do is just keep doing what we're supposed to do by law, and keep partner audits and partner revenue off of us, so. But it's that time of year, and we'll, we have to do what we gotta do. Board of Assessors doesn't wanna raise values, but we had no choice, because it's overwhelming. It's truly overwhelming, not just here. It's all over the United States, all over State of Georgia, it's everywhere. I've talked to people in Oregon, and they say the same thing. They're selling their properties for unbelievable amounts of money. They kind of have some of the same issues with people pouring out of California to go to Oregon, or come out this way, so do see a lot of that. But also, out of Mississippi, we see a lot of folks out of Mississippi, have no idea, but we've seen that for years, people coming out of Mississippi. Iowa, New Jersey, New York, you name it, they're coming here. But just to let everybody know, those notices will be going out, and there are some changes, and also too, on that, we've already started working on next year's, trying to stay on top of them, and keep those values where they need to be at. We don't like doing it, but we, we have to do it, so.
Question. Sure. Terry, just, just ball marking, I mean, I don't know if this is a viable question, if there's actually percentage-wise on increases, what are you, if you was talking just a general across the board, how, how are we looking?
Okay, let me, let me start with this. Everybody's property is different, and they have a different, different value to them, different way of doing things, different grade, they all have a different makeup, different acreage, and so forth. So some, some go up a little bit, some go up a little bit more, some may not go up hardly at all. Overall, once we've got done, and we had to change our base values to begin with, that's what helped us to get up to, to that forty percent, that perfect spot, and we had to change those, but, but overall, with doing that, the entire county is right at twenty-four percent. So it doesn't mean though that every person's property went up twenty-four percent.
Overall, was the overall average, did about twenty-five percent increase?
Yeah, it's twenty-four point nine is what it, it come out to. But like I say, it's, everybody's property is different, some, some went up a little bit, some probably it, and depending on what they've done, you know, some went out and found things they may have added to it that we didn't know about, or things like that. The new, new property, new construction doesn't really have an influence on that, because they've not seen, they've not had that benefit of being in that previous value range, so, so they wouldn't, they wouldn't be affected like that. We do have, you know, quite a few of those, so, which is a good thing. Overall, that's just what it is everywhere. Everybody's going up like that. And we went up, we went up last year trying to chase it down a little bit, I think it went sixteen percent last year, and that was nothing compared to what the sales were doing. Sales are ungot them. Got a lot of people, and we've heard it, they, they're bidding on these properties and, and getting way above what the asking price is. You've got, you've got bidders. You've got bidders paying hundreds of thousands of dollars to other bidders to get them to stop bidding on properties. So it's, this is not like anything that we've ever seen before, it's just, it's hard to keep up with that, you know? The banks, it's a little different this time, because the banks are, they're not loaning that kind of money. So if someone, you know, gets that property, the bank's only going so far. They're, they're legally bound now, after all, that disaster back in two thousand eight, but people are putting money on top of it, and they've got money, and, and, and quite a bit of money on top of what the asking prices are. We see it, see it all the time, and.
There's been an increase since January first of two thousand and one up to current. There's been a twenty-six percent increase in our market in the median value, just the median value, that's everything, just in the whole county.
Since when, two thousand?
Since January of two thousand and one. There's no, the, here's the problem, there's no inventory out there hardly, and so the, the simple supply and demand.
Correct.
The demand is still so great, and the supply's not there, so it's driven the prices up, and people have actually, I've seen it several times, where property's listed for two hundred thousand, it sells for two fifty, and so, because they get into those bidding wars.
Y'all see a lot of that, I've heard, I've heard it, but y'all see, actually see.
Unfortunately, that's, if you get enough of that, that creates a market, and we have to do that, because, you know, that's what state law charges us to do. So it's, it's like Terry said, it's nothing that we wanna do, it's just that, you know, the law requires us to do.
Keep us compliant.
Yeah, we have to be compliant.
Yeah, and, you know, the partner revenue review is what we do, they keep up with us through the partner audits, and, and to make sure that we've got our numbers up there. If we don't have our numbers up there, of course, the county gets fined. If, you know, it's five dollars a parcel, that seems like nothing, right? Well, now, they've added teeth to all of this. They can actually strip the county of all their grants, and you're talking millions of dollars gone like that. If it's, if the county doesn't cooperate, and it gets so bad, they can take away the charter. The county would no longer exist, they, they went that far. And then, state will tell you what you're gonna do, and that's the last thing we won't hear, never want state telling us how to value property, what we should be doing here, so. So we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, but unfortunately, it's hard to chase it down, because there's, you know, this same house I was telling you about, sold three times, you know, it's a hundred thousand dollars increase every year. When you have hundreds of them like that, it winds up affecting everybody else. So it'd be one thing if we just had one or two, we'd just kick them out.
Just to give you all an idea, from January of this year to today, there's already been a fourteen percent increase in the market, five months, fourteen percent.
Terry, you mentioned four thousand deed transactions, was that in twenty twenty-one?
For the twenty twenty-one sales for the twenty twenty-two tax year.
Okay.
And we, like I said, the, already blocked that for the two thousand twenty-three tax year, the coming tax year. So we, we did eighty-one deed books last year, and you're looking at right around fifty on average per book. Then, this year, we're already up twenty-five. So it's, it's not easing up, and then, and then when you, we get the P T sixty-one, which tells us, you know, the, the transfer, how much they paid for it, and all of that, and sometimes, man, it's just shocking. You just sit there and shake your head, like, what are we gonna do? You know, this has gotta stop at some time, but there's just too many things going on with, number one, the inventory, the inventory's not there. The demand is high because of situations like the interest rates. Interest rates are so low, people we've been working with, that, they worked out of some other counties too, he said he was, he's heard of them getting a one point eight percent interest rate, so, just unheard of. So I know the feds talked, raised it a little bit, that's nothing, that is absolutely nothing, that will not slow down anything. Then you got, you know, of course, all these, the years, all this stuff's starting to accumulate, this lack of inventory, then you play in zoning restrictions. So zoning restrictions are starting to catch up, because now you've got, you know, all these people coming in, but you're only limited what you can do in certain areas. So that sort of thing is catching up too, and it's causing a problem with the inventory. So there's a lot of things going on out there, if you just think about it, you know, people flooding the country, now they're moving out here, and it's creating issues here.
And if you didn't have zoning in place, then you'd be elbow to elbow, knee deep.
Yeah, and it's just a, you know. They don't do so much, so. The only, only thing that would fix that sort of thing, that'd be a, just a whole new way of thinking about zoning restrictions when it comes to that. You couldn't, you couldn't like change things in Marker County, and the rest of the state not change along with it, it'd be disastrous. So, so you'd need everybody in the United States to change the zoning way of doing things. You know, back in the day, it was just to restrict certain areas, you know, but now, with, with growth over the years and people coming in, you know, the number's going up as far as, you know, amount of homes, now you're getting into where, oh, we can't build here, we can't do this. So you've got that, along with the interest rates, so, so it's putting a burden on the inventory here.
Well, thank you for coming tonight and giving us an update. Appreciate it, very informative.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda is a resolution R twenty-one dash twenty-two. This is a, our four oh one A program for our retirement program for our employees that are on the four oh one A. ACCG has amended the, and restarted, excuse me, restated the ACCG four oh one A defined contribution plan document, and the accompanying document agreement to reflect changes in applicable law, and has obtained Internal Revenue Service pre-approval for the amended and restated ACCG four oh one A defined contribution plan document, adoption agreement utilizing the two thousand twenty IRS pre-approved plan document for Walker County. These new documents reflect the same retirement plan, design, and benefit that were implemented effective October one of two thousand nineteen. So our team members will see no changes to their four oh one A retirement benefit, this will just be to update the documents that are required by the Internal Revenue Service. So I'll read this resolution. Unfortunately, it's a little bit lengthy. This was prepared for us for adopting of these agreements. Resolution to adopt and amend the restated ACCG four oh one A defined contribution plan for Walker County employees, whereas Walker County, Georgia, the employer, has previously adopted the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia ACCG four oh one A defined contribution plan for Walker County employees, the plan through the adoption agreement, whereas ACCG has appointed a defined contribution plan program board of trustees, the D C board pursuant to the ACCG defined contribution plan program master trust agreement. The master trust oversees plan administration, plan documentation, and to select investment options for investments of the assets of the plan, whereas ACCG has amended and restated the ACCG four oh one A defined contribution plan document, and the accompanying adopting agreement to reflect changes in applicable law, and has obtained Internal Revenue IRS pre-approval for the amended and restated ACCG four oh one A defined contribution plan and adoption agreement, the two thousand twenty IRS pre-approved plan document, whereas the employer desires to amend and restate the plan by adopting the two thousand twenty IRS pre-approval plan document, whereas the employer desires to amend adoption agreement section two point one seven, eligible employees exclude district commissioners in order to conform to the terms of the plan to applicable state law and the employer's past administrative practices, whereas the employer desires to further amend the adoption agreement section two seventeen. Whereas the employer desires to further amend the adoption agreement section two seventeen. Eligible employees to include employees of the tax commissioners hired before July one, two thousand twelve in order to conform the terms of the plan to the employer's past administrative practices. Now therefore, at the meeting held, which would be today, the Walker County Board of Commissioners hereby resolves as the following. Resolve that the Walker County Board of Commissioners hereby approves the adoption of the attached amended and restated ACCG four oh one A defined contribution plan for Walker County employees consisting of the ACCG basic plan document and the accompanying adopting agreement, which reflects the elections made by the employer under the provisions amended and restated plan. Further resolve that the provisions in section six point zero two of the former adoption agreement, which became effective October one, two thousand nineteen, which reads, "A participant vested percentage in the employer contribution to service with the employer before October one, two thousand nineteen shall not be less than the vesting percentage obtained by the participant as of September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen under the applicable terms of the superseded plan in effect as of September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen shall continue to apply and if included in the amendment and restated document." Further resolve that the effective date of the amended and restarted plan shall be January one, two thousand twenty-two, except otherwise specified therein and provided that the above described changes concerning the eligibility of district commissioners and the eligibility of employees of the tax commissioner hired before July one, two thousand twelve shall apply retroactive to the date they were first implemented by the employer. Further resolve the commissioner chairs hereby authorized and empowered and directed to take all further actions and to execute all documents necessary to implement these resolutions. Further resolve that any resolution in conflict with this resolution is hereby repealed. This is for the Walker County Board of Commissioners signed by the chair. Again, they're doing this for every four oh one A plan that they administer in the state. I think this is a process they have to do like once every ten years. The reason for the couple of changes there. There was a state program for tax commissioners and tax commissioner employees that was a state program that was stopped back in two thousand and twelve. But our tax commissioner and tax commissioner employees have been on our plan. And so we had to make this modification so they did not get excluded because we want them to all continue to be on our plan. And then our enabling act specifies that the district commissioners' compensation does not include the county paying for any type of benefits. The district commissioners can pay for benefits as additional expense of their own. But the four oh one A program is a hundred percent county funded. No county employee puts money into this plan. So that's why those couple of modifications had to be made to make sure we still honor everything that we're currently doing. So there's quite a stack of documents here that outlines the program. So this time, is there any questions of the board?
No, sir.
No, that was a lot. All right, so do we have a motion to approve the resolution and the attached documents for the restatement of the four oh one A program?
Yes, motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart to accept the resolution and the attached documents. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay, the next item we have is purchase order two thousand twenty-two dash zero 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 one three seven nine to Chase ReLine Inc. for thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars for Callan Drive Storm Drain Rehabilitation to be funded out of the two thousand twenty-two general funds. So I've asked our public work supervisor, Carlin Bowers, to come up and give a brief overview of this project.
This is about two hundred and ten feet of galvanized pipe that's washed out on Callan Drive. It rusted out. It's caused some of the yards that this runs through to sink, some of the dirt and everything is kind of just running through the pipe. Chose to do the reline. There's two large catch basins that would be involved if we were to dig it all up, one concrete driveway. We'd have to close Callan Drive, which is pretty heavily traveled through four days to try to get all of this worked in. Three utilities, sewer, water, and I'm pretty positive there's gas in that too. All of that, it would be in the middle of all of that dig, so. Relining it, they will, they're putting twenty-inch H D P E pipe in it. I know it's a twenty-four inch pipe, but it's a smooth wall, so the flow rate will match up. They're also going to, instead of completely rebuilding these catch basins, while they've got their grout machines in there, they'll redo the bottom and fix the walls, then pressure pump everything else in there to fill the void, so there won't be any excavation needed. Any questions on that?
Have you just counted before?
Yes, yes, they've done several of these and they're pretty good and pretty quick. And the job should be about maybe three days, three days tops. So, no, they're pretty good at it.
We've had good success with this company. And once Carlin made his assessment and got some pricing, I met him out there and looked at this firsthand as well. And it would be a major project going in and dig it all up. It would cause a tremendous amount of inconvenience for those people in the subdivision. Because this is at the bottom of the subdivision, then it inclines up. This is probably the most cost effective, most time efficient. I think we've had this company over the last couple of years, maybe do about five other projects. One was down on West Cove Road on the south end, and they did one.
Overbrook.
Overbrook Drive was one, it was very successful.
We've done an eighty-six inch. When we had the, kind of the tornado south end of Lafette on Easter Sunday, had an eighty-six inch pipe that went under our road railroad track on Dripping Springs Road, I think that was, the dead end portion, remember it? And anyhow, it is a big pipe, you drive a truck through it. And they'd done it in about maybe two weeks. But there was no way we could dig that one out. It was a good eighty feet on one side, eighty feet deep, so. It worked out, they've done a really good job and it's taking everything it should, flowing good and everything's held up, so.
So I definitely concur with our superintendent's evaluation, this is the most best way to fix this.
When do you think the work was started?
I talked to him a little bit last week, I think he was gathering, just getting materials together. I'll call him, tell him this is approved if everything works out. And I need to get a timeline, they've got a lot of stuff going on. I know they're working on a couple for G dot now, but I believe this is, they can get on it, should be able to get on it pretty quick.
Any other questions for Mr. Carlin? All right, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the purchase order for Chase ReLine for thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Askew, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, purchase order is approved. Thank you, Mr. Carlin. Okay, the next item we have is our monthly departmental statistic data report. On our animal shelter, eighty-six dogs and sixty-nine cats were brought into the shelter. We had a really good response this past month on adoptions, thirteen adoptions of dogs and eighteen cats. It's always great to report to return as many animals to the rightful owner as possible. There were seventeen dogs that were returned to the rightful owner. Code enforcement did two hundred and eighteen inspections, had to write thirty citations. Our roadside trash team picked up nine thousand four hundred and eighty pounds of trash off the side of the road. Our voters register reported two hundred and five people registered new to vote in Walker County. So that brought our total up to forty-two thousand five hundred and twenty people showed to be registered to vote in Walker County. Fire department, fortunately, calls for services are down, which is always positive. Four hundred and thirteen calls for service. They installed nineteen smoke alarms, which is always good, good report. Anytime we get more smoke alarms out there to protect our families. Mountain Cove Farms was super, super busy in April with a hundred and sixty-seven nights of rentals in our cabin and house. That was up from forty-nine from the month of March. Single family home construction, still very hot in Walker County, twelve new permits pulled. Gets us at fifty-eight for the year. We added seventy-two additional followers to Facebook and added forty new subscribers to our free newsletter. And our transit service had twenty-two hundred and sixty-two trips on our transit. And we know that's going to continue to increase due to our starting of offering transit on Saturdays starting in the next couple of weeks. So those are just some of the highlights of the report. You can find that information on our website or in the agenda packet as well. Okay, at this time, we do have on our agenda for Commissioner comments, so we'll start with Commissioner Blakemore.
Appreciate everybody coming out, I'd be glad to help any and why I can. Just call, text, or email, if I don't answer, I'll get back to you, thank you.
Thank y'all for your support, thank you for your getting out and coming and being a part of the process. I want to remind everybody that our election's coming up. We've got our early voting will end the twentieth tomorrow, or this Saturday will be our last Saturday to early vote. I'd just like to convey to folks how important it is to get out, support your candidate, support your community because that's your right, and you need to do it, and we need to make sure we participate in that. So it's coming down to the wire, so just be sure if you want to do it early, you've got another week. Saturday is the last Saturday and the early voting stops on the twentieth. Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Hart?
Yeah, that's important, Mark, glad you brought that up, make sure you vote. The Honeybee Festival in Lafette is a big event they haven't had the last couple of years to the coming. They've got a big event planned on June the fourth, so look it up, it should be, they've got a lot planned for that, it's going to be a great event. The other thing I want to mention, we should have a new barbecue restaurant open on the west side of Lafette within a couple of weeks. Robert Wardlaw's restaurant should be open, I'll talk to him another day, so lucky.
Lucky IQ.
Lucky IQ Barbecue. If you haven't had it before, it's going to be great, it's over there in the old Morris Theater District, so a little bit forward to that opening up.
Making me hungry. I want to thank everyone for coming tonight, certainly appreciate it. If I can be of any service, call, text, email. I want to thank all of our county employees who are here, and I appreciate everything you're doing. Thank you for your service to the county. I want to give a shout out to the road department, I've talked to you guys multiple times this week. And so thanks for all you're doing, working hard, and greatly appreciate that, thank y'all.
Well, thank you. I wanted to share with everyone tonight a letter that I got from the U S Environmental Protection Agency, or better known as the EPA. And typically, when you get letters from the EPA, it's not good news. But fortunately, this time, it's very good news. And so I wanted to read this letter to you, I received this today from the EPA. Says, "On behalf of the United States Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, I am pleased to congratulate you and confirm that Walker County was selected as one of the entries EPA will begin negotiating to award a cooperative agreement for the assessment grant. Walker County submitted an outstanding application, and we are deeply appreciative of the tremendous commitment of time and energy that went into the preparation. Since the inception of nineteen ninety-five, EPA Brownfields Program has worked to help state and communities around the country to clean up revitalized brownfield sites. We fully expect that these brownfield projects will provide benefit to the environment, economic, excuse me, and the economy of the local communities. Again, congratulations on being selected, we look forward to working with you. And speaking with the regional four representative, he actually called me today before he sent me this letter. He was the representative again from region four, from the EPA. Region four represents the state of Georgia, Kentucky, South Carolina, Alabama, Mississippi, Florida, and six tribes. They received ninety-eight proposals for grant applications. Fifty-seven are receiving some level of funding. Seven of those are in the state of Georgia, one including Walker County. And so this was a collaborative project in conjunction with the city of Lafette, city of Chickamauga, and the city of Rossville. Want to give a shout out to Elizabeth Wells, she was a big part of this. She put a lot of time and energy and did a lot of heavy lifting on this, representing both the city of Rossville and the city of Lafette both. This, we've got a little more paperwork we have to do before we actually receive the official award. But this is the pending documents that they send out to issue this award, to issue an award to Walker County and the three accompanying cities of a half a million dollars to do brownfield assessments in our communities where we have sites like Coats America, the Barwick facilities, and many others in our community that need to be cleaned up and revitalized and put back into the marketplace. And so this half a million dollar grant pays for the engineering work that needs to be done to do the site assessments to meet all of the federal guidelines. Once that is done and completed, then we will go in queue for funding for cleanup. And most of the cleanup projects are usually around a million dollars starting out per site is what it takes to clean up a lot of these sites where there's contaminations and pollutions. So once again, we've been very blessed in Walker County over the last several months of receiving grants. This is something that the team's been working on for about two years. We applied last year as well, and we lost out by five points. We missed the mark by five points. And there was no one in Georgia got a grant last year. So we are one of seven in the entire state and one of fifty-seven in the entire region out of ninety-eight applications. So hats off to the team and all of the folks in our cities and counties that took part in this. And now the work really begins. And so we look forward to getting this off and running. And we will have some public hearings on this going forward, informational sessions. And also, this will allow for property owners within our community can submit their property to get the assessment as well that would be paid for out of this grant. So it may be something as small as a, maybe a former gas station or convenience stores or any type of business or property that maybe has a past issue. So we can work with big projects and small projects and invest these grant dollars into getting the assessments. And then everything that gets assessed will put in queue for funding for cleanup. So it can be owned by a local government, it can be private property, all the above. The federal government through the EPA just wants to work to get properties cleaned up and get the environment in good condition. So this is a big day for Walker County to get this grant. And want to thank our local delegation as well for all their support behind the scenes and the relationships that they have to help us get these type of things over the line, so. So, hats off to our local elected officials at the state level as well. So, at this time, that's all that I have. Do we have a need to go into an executive session for any item?
Yes, I'd like to call for an executive session, discuss personnel and real estate.
Okay, we have a need to go into executive session, discuss personnel and real estate. So, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Have a motion by Commissioner Askew. Do we have a second?
Sir.
Have a second by Commissioner Blakemore. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All righty. So, we will be adjourned until we come back from executive session. Let's back into the order. It's still Thursday, May the twelfth. It is eight fifty-six P.M. We just concluded our executive session. There's no further action at this time from the executive session. So, do we have a motion to close out our meeting?
I should adjourn.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we've got a second from Mr. Askew. It seems like there's some more that we need to maybe talk about on that.
I like the good.
Think we're okay?
I like the good.
We're going to go ahead and adjourn because I think Mr. Stoltz is anxious to get out of here tonight. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned.